We'll call the meeting over. Okay.
Good morning. So today we're going to be digging into four of your big moves. New Neighborhood Choices, Sustainability, Public Identity, and Old Campus. I appreciate you listening to the staff today. It was kind of a long time talking about the accomplishments of yesterday, but now it's time to dig in more deeply to some of our big moves and get some initial direction from the council on next steps. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Donna here.
Thank you, Donna. Good morning. As Donna said, we were focusing last night on those accomplishments. We're looking today about 2015. Where do we go from here? And so what we've tried to do with the format for today is that we've broken the topics down into big moves. For each of those big moves, we'll be asking for some direction from you. So we're really, this is really intended to be a session where the staff will be presenting information to you that they think is pertinent, so that then you can provide further direction on your priorities and the things that you think need to happen during this year's approach to things. So that's what we'll be trying to do. We're starting with the new Neighborhood Choices, as Donna said. And so you're going to hear from several different staff members about background information. And the first part of that, we're going to be talking about several of the points that you all mentioned last night. And so I wanted to, I'm going to try to sort of flag those and make sure we touch and thoroughly connect with the things that you told us were important to you. So in terms of our New Neighborhood Choices, several of you mentioned the fact of the east side being a real area for opportunity for future growth and opportunities to do things right. And also the flip side of that concern about making sure that we don't have an us versus them kind of discrepancy between the eastern part of the city and the western part. So as we're talking this morning about New Neighborhood Choices, the areas of Louisville that are to the east, I want you to keep that in mind, particularly with what you'll be hearing from Eric and then what you'll be hearing from Melinda and the chiefs in terms of a second point that you all mentioned, which was the impact on services and what's coming up and what are those needs as these areas grow. And that's particularly what we'll come back to at the end of the discussion on New Neighborhood Choices. We'll be looking for some direction from you about how you would like the staff to make some of those investments and really to help shape the budget for this coming year. There were also, there was also a comment last night about apartments and multifamily and how do we engage the people in those parts of our community and how do we think about development that stays good, that doesn't start to age as some of the past stuff has done. So that too, as you think about areas for new development on the eastern side of the community, how do we make sure that the quality is such that you don't run into those same problems 10 or 20 years down the road? So several of those points, those are points that I heard from you all last night that we will be touching on, that will be relevant for this first big move we're talking about this morning. So with that, I'm going to turn it over first to Eric, I think. And you're going to, we'll be using the technology over here to illustrate some work there. And then Melinda, she'll be coordinating with both chiefs on some of those issues about services. After those presentations and what kinds of questions and comments you all might have on those, then there will be an executive session discussion. And then after the executive discussion, we'll come back to make sure you can give us your direction on what you'd like to see happening on the new neighborhoods and service provision on the east side. So that was our first big move. Eric?
Thank you. Good morning. So let's go out to East Louisville and let's see, let's see what's going on. Have a couple of things we're going to show you and give you some guidelines on how to look at this data. This is a map of East Louisville. We thought it was interesting to look to see what is Louisville, what's Castle Hills, and what's not, what's Carrollton, Hebron. We'll look at that in a minute. This map, I don't even know if I can say it in plain English colors, but that's beside it.
I knew you was going to say that.
Everything in green, this shade of green is the city of Louisville. So this is the east end of Lila, coming up to the spillway, coming up to the Opus Development, everything north of 121. Here's 121, Business 121, 544. So all of this is Louisville here, the residence and development up here to the north. We come up here to Fire Station 6. And of course, out here is Lakewood Hills or the Josie Development. Here's Austin Ranch with Cisco Foods and Henry and Lucy's Development, the 200 acres of multifamily down here. Everything else in a shaded color is a district of Castle Hills. I'm going to flip it back to the chart, so we can kind of look at the data of population. Now this chart, broken down into really three areas. Castle Hills in green of all the districts, the purple is East Louisville. Interesting, we'll start with Castle Hills. This is in your notebooks. These are in ascending order by buildout, total-toal by buildout in year. As a benchmark, starting point, through December 2014, the estimated population, number of people living in Castle Hills in all the districts today is 12,257 people. That's a pretty good count based on the households. And from what they're telling us and what we've seen is their average number of heads per house is a little higher than some of the other developments, some of the other snapshots of the city due to the fact of the products they're putting on the ground. Now they're getting into some of the lesser dense products with the golf bills we'll look at in a minute, some of the other stuff with their multifamily coming on. But when they started out with the ABC Developments and really in 1B, those are fairly good-sized homes with generally two adults and two roughly nearly one and three-quarter kids or two kids per household. So their average per house is a little high. So if we look at this per district, 1A is a small district that's already built out.
A managed district.
I think Rick Purdy lives there, 440, it's an old house suspended. The only district there is a managed district, so there's only four people there. 1E, you have 829 single-family units. You can see the totals now, go through these. 1B is one of the older ones, and they'll say, well, G West Ferris, that's kind of built out. There's a few lots left, so we left it on there in 2017. For the most part, 1B is built out. It does have some lots left, so we left it at total buildout. An interesting point on the map, as you'll see, Burnt. We've included that. We'll show you that in a minute on the map. Has 177 single-family units. That's the, that's the new portion to the south that they're looking to annex in on. We'll put to that right quick. So again, the Burnt Track is down here to the south. Their discussions are to include that into 1C. Is that right, Brenda?
Yes, Brenda.
So this is currently here, but they're going to be adding to that, so Burnt will come up and be a part of Castle Hills. Go back to the chart just right quick. Again, 1H, that's the realm that y'all had addressed a couple of three months ago with the list of variances. That is their multifamily and their high-density and retail assembly and their flash and dash Chrisville to the north of Windhaven, that y'all saw on the tour. So 1H is that, with their large multifamily to the south and the retail and movies and all this stuff mixed use to the north. So that's 1H. When it's all said and done, when Castle Hills is built out, they're estimating, and we're estimating approximately 26,950 folks in Castle Hills. And keep in mind that today, there's a portion of that 26,950 on the ground. So roughly, their population again is 12,200. So they're basically going to double that by the year 2028. Some of these, we'll go back and when we go to the map, you'll see that 1G is, does have residential, multifamily and residential units, although that's their big corporate campus. Bottom part is northeast Louisville, we saw, and we'll look at this in a minute. Lakeside 121, Meridian Development, Madera. Some of this is single-family, some of it's townhouse, and some of it's multifamily. Some of this is obviously on the ground, but again, this doesn't get built out, I believe, until 2025, that we're forecasting, as it stands today. And the biggest one here is the 200 acres of Billingsley, south end of Austin Ranch, that is currently a zone multifamily. We're forecasting a 10-year buildout on that. Henry may say otherwise, but again, they're looking at like a 5,000 apartment units.
They are. We are trying to convince him to reason, so we'll see.
We're talking with Henry about that, and he'll tell you maybe it's, well, we'll have it all built in three to five years, but I don't think that's probably realistic since they haven't started, we haven't heard from them. So that's in this forecast. So when you build out East Louisville, when it's total-toal, you're looking at 20,538. If you combine the two, East Louisville as a snapshot by 2028 will be 47,488, somewhere in that neighborhood.
At that 20,538, we decided about 3,500 are candidate population today.
That's correct. So you can assume 3,000 to 4,000 on the ground to the north into infill there. Off of 544 is in play right now for our police, fire, and other services, animal services, and everybody else that's having to adjust their service levels to what's going on out there in East Louisville. Let's look at the map. Any questions on the chart? We can go back and forth.
Can I make a comment on the Burnt Track for a moment? The Burnt Track again is down here, you see it at the bottom of the map. So either the first meeting in April, or if I can convince him, the second meeting in April, because I think we need more time to look at it. They're going to be coming to you guys to ask you to bring the Burnt Track into District 1C. And we talked in the past that we really don't want to expand any of these districts. The only reason I would recommend to you that it would be acceptable in this case is they're not expanding the authorization. You have $7 million in bonds, a really limited amount of bonds that's authorized for District 1C. And so they plan to bring in Burnt and not attempt any expansion of that.
At this time?
Yes, well, really at any time.
So are they putting that in the, in the annual budget?
We can certainly make them do that, yes, sir.
I think that'd be wise.
I do, too.
Additional authorization would require another vote, and once they have residents there, it may be hard to achieve that, should be.
I don't know if you're...
But you'll be seeing that...
In the installation, I don't know if you're...
You'll be seeing that fairly quickly.
Okay, so I'm going to walk you from kind of west to east, and we'll cover Castle Hills by district. I'm not going to drill down any of this, but we'll cover it. I think there's some interesting points that will benefit your decision-making in the future of how this is coming to fruition. 1G, again, we're at 121, 544, 121 split. 1G is kind of, in this area, is kind of their corporate campus. We have a preliminary plaque and final plaque in for this block that adjoins 121 and 544 to the north. They've got a nice, they're amenitizing the creek channel down here with some holding water. Dave, don't pass out on me over there, but they're addressing this as an amenity with the creek. They're developing the south end first, and I believe they're already underway. They're looking for office, some high-rise and some, again, some small corporate campus. So 1G is underway. When you see the boxes here on the districts, you'll see a total-toal head count. And we didn't do it per area, so we kept it simple. So 1G has 2,352 people. None of them are here, but they're here and over there, we'll see it in a minute. So keep that in mind when you're looking at the districts, the total-toal head count on there, that's a buildout head count, is on there. This area up here, they have, I believe, a service station on the corner with a large retailer behind it. And 1G, they don't have any plans for at this point.
Who's going to own that holding tank you were talking about? The holding, the holding tank, water tank you were talking about?
The water, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be the freshwater district, or it'll be part of the commercial lots with a drainage adjustment through it. Is that correct, Dave?
Yes.
Because remember, it's commercial. In residential, we require right-of-way. If that was the case, then that would be convertible, should we annex that. But right now, it'll be centerline, commercial properties. Real property owners will have it. Is there a big building here, a big building, in other words, there's a tangible owner there, but the freshwater district will maintain it, just like they're maintaining some of the other creekways and their walkways and some of the things through the district now, including 1H, the north part, where Chris has his mixed-use development.
So they're not going to divide that out into a separate entity like we had done over by Water Bridge there?
No, so what we'll do, what we've done, even in Louisville, when we have commercial lots, just like the Opus piece up here, you put that property line down the centerline of the creek. That way, there's no ghost entity that owns it, that goes away and, hey, it's an old man's land. So 1G in this area is happening. Of course, we have Aura Apartments here in 1G. 1F is fairly built out in this section. And again, the districts aren't necessarily together, as you'll start seeing the hopscotch as they go through the campus. Windell Meadows and Windhaven Crossing is underway. This is Amaranth here, with Windhaven coming up with the underpass soon to be going, in that right there. So 1E again has been on the ground for quite a while. The golf villas is 1C and some of 1D. You'll see that 1D looks to be fairly built out, but they have some infill multifamily and some condo units up by Village Shops, and well, as well as some programmed golf villas out in the future. So 1D is holding out, although you could look at the map and say, well, it looks pretty built out to me. But they do have about 20 units of condos that didn't program until late in the 20s, or the 20, I don't know the number, but it was later on in time. One point that, when they built Castle Hills, 1B has been on, they started putting people in homes there about 1998. They came in with three plaques, they were A, B, and C. It's kind of the original arc of homes around Standridge, around Tulsa Drive. This was actually the first development when the asphalt block appeared, when that happened. So they were building this section. So this is probably the oldest section. Remember on your tour, when the bus was hitting all the trees and whatnot, it was a little bit, you could tell that was built out, unless 1B, for the most part, gets built out. There's a little action going in the corner down here with 1D, some lots going in there with some homes, the Ty N2 Carrollton. Coming up to the north, again, they're under construction with the first phase of the realm down here. I call it Stanleyville, but it's now, this is Discovery at the Realm, but that name will change. The north part was Bridges, but the first 400 units are under construction of the multifamily. Remember, they told us they're going to put about 400 units every 18 months on the ground, and they're still at that pace. What they have done, though, that's interesting, is they've carved out a southern section for about 80 units of single-family detached housing. So they will come down in the southern area of 1H with some single-family housing. Now I still think they're going to have the Kingdom-type boulevard all the way to 544, which will actually help our services, should we annex or help police and fire for their response, so they won't have to go all the way around this thing to get through. Ultimately, at some point, it will probably require them to carry that road all the way through, even though they may not be building down here to get some connection between here or our service levels. I haven't seen any air connection here. They may do it, but I haven't seen it yet on any plans. But that's, remember, 1H, they have around 4,000-plus multifamily units in their matrix that they can build here for the 96 agreement. On the north side, that's where the movie theater, the restaurants, the mixed-use, the retail, the residential above retail is going in, and that was an unrestricted type of mixed use as far as the multifamily, really not coming toward the count. Originally, they were looking at 2,000-plus units. I think they're kind of coming back to the 1,200, to a thousand count in their future. So that's 1H. 1G, remember, that's on the east, on the west campus, but it's also on the east campus as well. You have, go to the far west, they have a single-family development. Excuse me. That's 1A. Oh, you have, you have the multifamily here, Platinum, Platinum 2, that's underway, built for the most part. You have some commercial here. 1F has some residential coming in over here. We saw that on the tour. That's east of the Target Center. Go back to Louisville, on the east side. You have Pine Prairie Apartments, that's on the ground with Phase 1, Phase 2. Guys, it's under construction, right? So Phase 2 is coming in, that's a large number here. Broadstone Lake Ridge, you'll remember, that was the old Kennesaw Pack bomb factory. Phase 1 of that was to the east, that we gave a variance for to swap the drive. That's underway. As soon as it gets to the second part of that, that will be underway with apartments. Lake Ridge Town Homes, Lakeside 121. Again, Meridian, for the most part, is built out. Remember, our core property that we had is still here, that, that comes up through, am I right? You got it right? Pass through here? Hold close, I can't see it. So East Louisville...
You're saying that all that area has 2,000 to 3,000?
This area?
Yeah, didn't you say, well, that all that...
Between 3,000 and 4,000, because again...
Does that include the apartments?
Yes, sir. Remember, these apartments out here were one and two-bedroom, and they were catering to that, because you all gave them the variance for the parking count at 1.65 or 1.67 instead of two per, because they're catering to either young couples with no children, or two guys that are going to college, they're catering to that demographic. We use, our factor up here is around 2.3, 2.5 per household up here, which is, I think, a good, or 2.8, depending on the size of the home on our factor, which is higher than what, or lower than what Castle Hills uses. But I would, you know, I would be estimating, what we could count is between 3,000 and 4,000 people out there right now of that total. We'll look at this in depth, and I think it's interesting to note. If you come out here to Hebron, and we're going to look at this a little bit closer with the Hebron map in a minute. Clem is coming to you probably in summer. Now Clem, remember, had the old rut crop, the rut, concrete crushing and the quarry and the dunk and whatever was going on out here. It has two acres where Dr. Clem has had the pet cemetery, the boarding, and the animal care facility down here, as well as her house. You have the extension over here where the liquor store is. But if you take Clem of what we would look to, what they're going to propose to annex, that's roughly about 140 acres. When you take out the 20-plus acres or two acres, you take out 20 acres in the creek that would be right-of-way, drainage right-of-way to the city of Louisville, because it's a residential. You've got 100 to 80 acres, around 100 rough acres for development of single-family units. So this area, just figure about 100 acres of single-family. They're talking about maybe having 10 or 20 acres to the south, maybe as commercial, but figure 2, figure 100 acres at around 770 people by the year 2021. They said they're coming hard and fast, that they were going, they're going to put their product on the ground and be built out by 2021, according to what their schedule's showing for Clem. Of course, Lakewood Hills is underway, estimating 1,532 people when that happens. This part of Hebron is owned by the school district. Been talking to Larry Williams, and with the interim superintendent and all, he's still, they still don't, according to his last conversation with me a few weeks ago, they still don't have any immediate plans to put a school on the ground. But we all know, that can change pretty quick with the Texas wind shifting from south to north. But we've not seen any plans on it as of late, but I've heard anywhere from an elementary school to a middle school to a high school to a middle school. And again, they go on both sides. There may be some opportunity there, you know, for, for things for acquisition by others, I'll leave it at that, but again, they own this portion.
It might be at some point, we might want to consider discussion with them about maybe shared park use, because you don't really have any community parks in this area for
There's been some, some inquiries regarding Hebron. This one's kind of a neat discussion in that, you know, Hebron by itself, I'll come up to a better scale, just a little bit more. What we've done with this map is try to show the boundaries of the city of Louisville, Castle Hills, Carrollton, Plano, the Colony, and Hebron, and what Hebron looks like today to the best of our knowledge. So we got, we had a base start with the town of Hebron. Kelly Clem's wife is, for the most part, representing the city. She's our point of contact through Castle Hills and through others, and she's the one that is currently representing the city as far as any verbal information or any other information. So we got the map through her, through Mr. Stan and Castle Hills. This is the latest version. We took it with the COG maps and tailored it, but we tried to show what's left of Hebron. So let's, and we took the COG maps and merged it, so this is what the document came up. It's certainly not official, but it's probably the best graphic that's out there. Leads and bounds may exist, it's something we're looking into right now to tighten this up. So the city of Louisville, we just saw, comes in to 1H in the purple here, comes down, and this is all Louisville. The white is the districts of Castle Hills. Again, we have Louisville, here's Lake Ridge, here's Henry's 200 acres, here's Cisco. The Colony comes in from the north, wraps in from the east in the sand and color here, kind of comes in and boxes out. Carrollton comes up from the south, boxes out in this area. You've got Plano to the east. So here, again, Hebron is this color, and this was the Burnt Track, or is the Burnt Track that we were talking about. Now you may see a map that has a little quadrant over here, but that was built out and annexed by Carrollton. There are homes there now, so that's gone. I saw one map the COG had that showed that, and Mr. Verem, you may, can add on here, but we still show that there may be some sort of a strip coming out to the east and dead endings somewhere out here. Don't know the validity of this strip, but it's showing up on the COG map, it showed up on the Hebron map. So this is the Burnt Track. If this comes into the district, that'll go away, and you know, their idea is that they dis-annex from Hebron and it gets put into the district all simultaneously. When we come out to this area, this is the Clem Track with the liquor store, and this is Josie that comes north to south. We'll do it on time. With the grocery store, potential grocery store of Brookshires to the, to the east here. Can y'all see that? We've had a few designs submitted into engineering with Dave, who's folks, to look at. It's not in the city of Louisville. I think Carrollton at this point is looking to provide sewer, they pump sewer south into their system. Carrollton is providing water to Clem's house, as of what we know today, it has been for a long time. But this is Hebron, this is Clem, and a portion of that would be annexed in, because that is what we were showing on that other map. At this time, it would not include the liquor store, nor would it include the grocery store site, if it's still a grocery store site. Of course, the school district is still up here in Hebron. We've had discussions with them, with Council Hills, to say, hey, you know, when you come in, we had with Lake Ridge 2, it would make sense with water, sewer, and any other drainage improvements, that they would come in with Clem. It's not really required, but it would make sense. But again, we haven't had a lot of conversations that have gone very far.
If they didn't come in, who would provide? Police and fire? County?
The county would provide county services for, for, for police, for sheriff. Chief, about fire?
It would be us. Would they, they would contract with us, because we, we will contract with them for all services on salary with the county.
But that had to contract with us?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. What would you be doing at our...
The biggest issue is...
Is that Brookshires, is that the only Brookshires? That's the only Brookshires in there?
One, is that?
Oh, there is one of them. Okay.
So the big thing here is the sanitary sewer that comes up. You can see, this is Lake Ridge, and this is, this is the school district piece here. Well, that creek, you see the green ring, that's got sanitary sewer lining, ready to go. So again, one bit, probably the number one thing to development is sanitary sewer service. I mean, that's, you can push water, but sanitary is always better for flows downhill, so the like...
Stop it. It's just, I didn't say a word. You're not really... Hard to know what to do.
So obviously... So obviously, you know, with the creek here, the school district property here, it makes sense that sanitary is ready to go. You know, we're in the number one spot for service of water. We have city water on top, we have city water coming into the bottom here now. So util, as far as utilities and as far as access and whatnot, that seems to be the most logical thing.
Let me interject one item there. When they, Carrollton had the CCNA to 121 business, or at that point, 121. And when they decertified and went to 544 in that area south, the agreement between Louisville and Carrollton and the Water Development Board was basically if anybody provides service up there, if they won't service from Louisville, they must annex. And the school district has that notice. So that property has to be annexed before water and sewer will be serviced in that area.
Okay, so we're going to come east a little bit with Hebron, we're going to continue on. The strip continues. Our five foot strip stops right here and bends around Lakewood. The hard corner of the city limits of Louisville is right here at the salmon in the purple. So that's where we stop at the southeast corner of Henry. The Hebron strip continues up, comes down and it boxes out here, comes on down to the south. Has some weird looking lines and this matches what we saw on the cog map. Mr. Durham, Councilman Durham may add to this, but it comes down to this area. Now, we think this has changed. This is Plano, this is Carrollton. This is an old, this is an airstrip that has been in place for quite a while. I heard that Billingsley bought it recently and that it's not in Hebron anymore.
I don't know about that part, but it has been purchased in the eventual building list and shut down at Brooklyn.
Where does Plano now?
I heard it's in bad shape and it was, you know, it was in, it was in conflict with some other FIA issues of being built out. But we heard this in the last few days that that may or may not be in Hebron anymore. So that's a snapshot of what we think is left of Hebron.
Eric?
Yes, sir.
One quick question, on the top left of the Clem tract, that where you have that chopped corner that's Castle Hills, is that Castle Hills or is that Hebron?
Right above the, straight up from the logo.
Up here?
Yeah. This, this.
Little triangle.
This triangle is Castle Hills. That was the 23 acres that was annexed in to the districts in 2005, 2006. Now, some maps still show it, but it's an error. But this map is correct and this little triangle area.
That was 1A, wasn't it?
I think 1A is down here.
But wasn't it shown?
Okay, well, then answer my questions. You're talking about this, this, this triangle right here?
Exactly.
That was the 23 acres that we did amendment, the only amendment we've done of our boundary to the 96 agreement was in 2005 or 2006. And it was the 23 acres that was taken in to the districts. So that's Castle Hills.
Pretty much power line, these were.
And some greenbelt that was squared off.
So logistically, would it make any sense for the city to look at annexing anything other than the Clem and that school property? Of Hebron?
You know, from.
I mean, they'd be isolated pockets that you'd have to go through to other cities to get to.
From, from a nuts and bolts standpoint, from a staff, from sanitary sewer, water, streets, and from really development, you know, I don't really know, I haven't studied this area that well. But, you know, past, past that point right here. Past this point in this area, I don't know if there'd be much value. You segmented, you would have just a strip to get there, you'd be surrounded by Carrollton and Plano and the Colony in the north. Certainly makes a lot of, I mean, some of the council members have made mention about these two areas. I want to look into this potentially, we won't get into that discussion. But from water and sewer and from thoroughfare and from zoning and from any kind of a real development type thing, you know, probably not so much.
And the water and sewer management plan at this point goes approximately where Eric mentioned. As far as the old plans and the revised plans.
This is a look at East Louisville. The districts north of Louisville and what we think is built out, what's happening in East Louisville. Any questions at this point? I'm going to turn mine over to Melinda, she's going to talk a little bit about police and fire.
Mayor, Councilwoman Melinda, get started. So obviously, there is a lot of growth that's going to be occurring on our east side. There's already a significant population there. What you need to keep in mind, for the total population, we already supply two services and that's fire and police. I think we've done a very, very good job as far as planning our fire service to East Louisville. You remember, obviously, you brought in Station 6. And then under your Fire Services Control budget, you have planned Station 8. You have the station and you have personnel. What we have not dealt with is police service. And we've had some significant pressure that Chief Kerbo and Melinda are going to talk to you about this last year from the residents of Castle Hills. So we wanted to make you aware of that and sort of the ways we've tried to deal with that. And then what it takes to actually provide a higher level of service, not only to Castle Hills, but the Castle Hills map. But our residents that are coming in over by Josie and obviously what can come in with Clem and Austin Ranch. So with that, we decided there's a lot of other services we can talk about. But the most expensive services that you provide, from a general fund point of view, are fire and police. So we want to start there. When you talk about water, certainly water and sewer are very expensive also, but that's, those are revenue bonds and revenue funded. So I wanted to start with the general fund side and focus on fire and police first.
Correct, you know, currently, the Louisville City Limits, the police and fire is all calculated in our base tax rate, correct?
Yes, sir.
Is the contracted rate that we have with these other entities equal to or greater than that base rate as far as compared to our cost for their services?
I would say it's significantly lower for Castle Hills, significantly. They pay you about $158,000 for police service.
So you're saying that it costs us money out of our general fund to provide services for Castle Hills at this time?
To an extent, yes. I can't give you a number on that, but I would say yes. Because, the thing of it in one way though, is that the service there is limited. And the chief and Melinda will get into that. You don't, you don't supply the same level of service now in Castle Hills that we do in the rest of the city.
But I'm just saying, the services we supply now, what we're doing now, you're saying that we're supplementing money from our general fund to pay for the services we do now in Castle Hills?
When you talk about the whole package of police services, that is the administration, the cost of equipment, facilities. I would have, I'm not running the calculus on that, Mayor, but I would say probably yes. Chief, do you agree with that now?
I'd agree, yes.
I think that's something I wish you need to look at. You're right now, you're taxing your citizens for areas that are not necessarily lived.
Absolutely, it's something we need to dig into, Mayor, especially as we start trying to deal with the fact that they want a higher level of service than we're supplying. And we certainly have to get back into that agreement with Castle Hills and reanalyze it. And that's going to be one of my recommendations to you.
And I think another thing we need to be calculating would be what would be the tax rate you would need to implement to, and I would separate it, you've got a tax rate that you calculate that you think would serve Louisville City Limits right now. But what would you think the tax rate would need to be to service that area outside, the entities that were serving outside the city limit? And then even before you even start looking at molding it too, you need to see, I think, what's going to cost us to, tax rate wise, to service that area before you can mold it into the Louisville tax rate.
In a sense, we've done some of that in a little different way than you're looking at it. We did use a tax rate comparison, because right now they pay for that service in Castle Hills via a sales tax. But we'll do some of that comparison for you. But you're right, that's another good analogy to look at.
And on that also, what would the savings be if we stopped the service?
Correct.
Because if there's no savings and we're, if we're not going to cut employees or cut equipment or cut something else, then there would be no savings.
And you're correct about that too, because we wouldn't cut any positions.
Right.
But we would save significant time of having to respond there for, the majority of calls are false alarms. And that's the big, it's a big time killer for us. So in that essence, time is money.
Except that.
But there would be no money savings.
Yeah, because you've got that additional population coming on in Austin Ranch and the Josie area, you're not going to be able to do staff.
On the other side of what Dean was saying, we could potentially be losing money for what we have right now. So that's, it's the other side to look at it.
But Dean, what business goes out there and buys the service where they lose money?
I'm sure there's somebody, but they don't.
They don't save business alone.
That's what I'm getting at though, is that while we're looking at an extra cost, at least on the surface, it's saying that there would be no savings if we stopped that service.
Well, we would without a doubt improve our service to the rest of the city.
That's correct.
Yes.
And going forward, you wouldn't have to add, going forward, if they're doing, I would say 10 hours a day over there. That 10 hours a day would be split with your citizens. So you could have an increase of 10 hours a day going forward, so I said this in Louisville.
Don't disagree with that.
Without any cost.
But I'm just, there wouldn't be a savings when you lose that money.
But now, the agreement's been in place since when?
96.
And it expires when?
There's no, we actually renew that annually. But under the 96 agreement, the city agreed to provide fire and police service. It's in your development agreement.
But there's not a cost, right? There's not a limit on the cost.
There is attached to that agreement. There is a separate public safety agreement that we renegotiate annually.
That's what I'm saying, so there's not an agreement in place currently says you cannot increase the cost of that at the end of the year.
That maybe what we need to do is increase the cost.
That's what we're going to talk about today.
Yeah, and the other part of that, just to remind you, the numbers in the maps that Eric showed you is that you've got those issues with Castle Hills, but you've also got roughly 20,000 people by 2025 in Louisville, in this eastern area. So you've got new Louisville neighbors that you're thinking about in terms of those services. So keep that in mind as well. And that's, so that's 20% more population. This whole thing is like half again as large of a population as what you have here.
So basically, as we've already discussed, Eric showed us that we're going to have about close to 48,000 residents that we're going to be serving for police and fire services out in East Louisville and including Castle Hills. As Donna mentioned, we've already have a plan in place that we've started working for, for the, to handle the fire and EMS. If you'll remember, we opened Station 6 in 2000 and that was built on land that was actually donated by Chris Bright, or Bright Industries. However, the cost of the station and equipping the station and needing the station has all been borne under the general fund budget. Except for, we added a medic, the first year that we added the crime control district that runs out of Station 6. So those personnel are funded out of the fire control budget. We also, in your five year plan, you might remember, for the crime control, we have in that plan funding for the design and build, construction of Station 8 along with the new truck and 18 fire personnel. So that's included in the budget. The fire services annually, we're, just for the, I know you're interested in the cost. Castle Hills, the contract price is estimated to be $389,000. And we run, that's estimated for 114 fire calls and 113 EMS calls. So that number is calculated based on a percentage of, we look at our total fire budget and we look at how many calls for service we have in the city of Louisville. Come up with an average cost of service and multiply that by the projected cost of service. So that, that's why that calculation is so much higher. As Donna mentioned, for police, it's only 158,000. So obviously, we're getting more of our money back on the fire side. And part of that is due to the fact that was renegotiated, that methodology earlier, early on in the agreement. Now, from the police side, we, that number, that calculation is based on different factors. We're spending about, are they paying us 145,000 a year for just the response to calls to service? Anything extra or above that is at a rate of $66 per hour. We are providing crossing guard services out there, but they are reimbursing us the total cost for a crossing guard. It's about $9,000 a year. So they're paying for the crossing guards that work at the schools in Castle Hills. Another service we're also providing, police are responding to those false alarms. We're also providing, under the contract, the administrative costs for permitting and billing for those false alarms. So that brings that total police contract to 158,000. And just so you know. I'm sorry?
Just real quick, if they, and I'm trying to remember the ordinance, but if they exceed two calls a year, the same residents, do they get billed?
Yes, it's just not your ordinance, it's the city of Louisville. That's state law, if you remember how we can bill for false alarms. So the services, the way that money comes to the city of Louisville is through the SPA agreement. If you'll remember, when we adopted the strategic partnership agreement in 2009, the sales tax that comes in through that SPA is what's used to pay those public safety expenses. At the end of the year, if there's any money left, that's split 50/50 between the district and the city of Louisville. And this chart shows you the last four years, the cost of the public safety services contract combined, compared to the cost or the revenue that we're bringing in for sales tax minus the 4B tax. And so you can see there's, the amount that's been shared has gone down annually. To this, to 2014, it was $20,000. So that's $10,000 coming to the city of Louisville, 10,000 to Castle Hills. And Russ is going to talk to you a little bit, as Donna mentioned, we've been getting a lot of pressure from Castle Hills, from the district, especially from their residents, on wanting additional services. We had that armed robbery that occurred out there in May of last year and that sparked a renewed interest in police services. So Russ has done an excellent job giving them a Band-Aid approach that he'll talk to you about, but it's not sustainable. We obviously, after retreat, want to start looking at renegotiating that contract because if you notice that 389,000 is what they're paying us for fire services for about 200 calls. Police calls for service are about 2,300 and it's 145,000. So obviously, we need to renegotiate how we look at that contract.
Give me those numbers again, real quick.
The fire contract is estimated to be 389,345 for this fiscal year. The basic services for police, 158,579. But remember, for the law enforcement, that's just responding to calls for service. Like that robbery, when Chief Kerbo had to get investigators out there, we had more of a crime scene. That's $66 an hour that's budgeted on top, or that is paid on top of that.
There's actually a separate bill that goes to Castle Hills.
And you can see in that chart, the additional services, in 2012 were about 6,400. 13 was about 3,700 and in 14, it was about 3,800. That's at $66 an hour for those additional police services that are being budgeted.
Now, the 390 and the 159, I'm using random numbers, are those our cost or what we're building?
That is the contracted billing, that's what they're.
What are our costs?
Well, the fire budget, I think.
What is our cost for providing those services?
So the way we get that number on the fire department is we take our general fund budget. We divide the cost of, we take our number of calls for service. What is that average call for cost of service?
First calls in Louisville?
In Louisville. And that's how we come up with that rate. And then we project what their, or we look at what their calls were last year, which was about 113 medical, 112 fire. And we take that rate and multiply it by that cost. So it's more of a true calculation. And we take that rate and multiply it by that cost. So it's more of a true calculation on the fire side.
You're saying our cost is three hundred and ninety thousand dollars and one hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars?
Well, there's one little misnomer. We're not including the, the fire control budget in that calculation, so I'd like to add that.
My cost is, what is the cost? Although I was told by Donna that we're spending Louisville citizens' tax dollars in Castle Hills that they're not, that Louisville citizens are not receiving services for. My question is, what is our cost? How much money are we divert, uh, diverting to Castle Hills that the citizens do not get anywhere?
I think that's a calculation that we need to do more thoroughly, Mayor. I hear your question.
When could we get that?
Uh, we can get that for you, only a little bit of time to step back and do that analysis. I'm not gonna have it today.
Oh, I did say, say, when? Give me your time.
When would you like it?
When can, well, I've been told tomorrow and I got it four weeks later, so. Where can you get this one, ma'am? I'm just saying you have to get it today or tomorrow? Is it two weeks, a month, or what?
Give me a month.
Okay, that's all I get. Thank you.
Guess one thing that I'm not understanding is if we have that extra money that we're splitting, would it, but it's still costing us money, why shouldn't we be getting all of that money and not splitting anything with that?
Because under your SPA agreement, the city agreed to do the split. So when we negotiated the strategic partnership agreement, which allows you to collect sales tax in the districts, the city agreed to take those dollars and first apply it against public safety services, and anything left had to be split between the city and the district.
Right, so that's my question, if we're spending, we should be getting, if it's costing, if we should be getting all of that money, right? Because public safety is...
I disagree, but that's not what we agreed to do in the district.
Because we set a rate within the...
Yeah, I think the disconnect here is there's a separate agreement that set the rate for this year. And that's, that's the only amount we can recover from the sales tax under the SPA. So if we, in our new agreement, we negotiate a higher rate, we'd get more money whenever it's left over.
Yeah, you have two different agreements here.
Okay, I got you. It's the rate, it's not, it's not covered.
You have the public safety agreement and the SPA agreement, two separate things.
And remember too, under the SPA agreement, we're not, we don't have the ability right now to collect that crime control tax and fire control tax. And that's one of the issues that we're looking at in the latest ledger this year. So with that, Tim, talk to us a moment about, uh, fire and police, I mean, uh, fire and EMS.
A snapshot of, of our plan to be prepared for the future growth and build-out out east in our ETJ areas. Um, you know, as, as Ms. Gollum mentioned a while ago, we have Station Six on the ground, we have an engine running out of there, we have a medic running out of there, and that medic is funded out of the, uh, fire control budget. Uh, everything else that's gonna take place out there to be prepared for the growth is gonna come out of the fire control budget. Uh, that was our five-year plan, to bring those services online through that budget. Right now, today, we are in the process of expanding our fire station number six. We're adding about forty-seven hundred square feet to that facility. And that is to get that building ready for the future growth and additional, uh, services and, uh, equipment and personnel in that area. So that'll be taking place this year. We'll hope to have it done by the, uh, it's gonna be a seven-month process, so hopefully if we get on it in April, uh, like the contractors planning, uh, seven months from now, that project will be completed. Uh, in the next fiscal year, our plans are to go ahead and design Station Eight, uh, get the design process out of the way, so in sixteen seventeen, we can, uh, go out and bid, get a contractor on board, build Station Eight, and at the same time, order a second ladder truck. Both of those projects will probably be one-year-long projects. It takes about a year to, to, uh, order, build, and, uh, take delivery of a truck. And we figure it'll take about a year to build a whole new station from the ground up. So that'll, that'll be in sixteen seventeen, uh, seventeen eighteen, we hope to have those projects wrapping up, um, and the truck being delivered, so that the guys can outfit it with equipment and start training on it. At the same time, we'll be hiring eighteen personnel to staff that truck and, uh, get it ready to put into service. And when, when that, when we're ready to go into service, is when we'll open Station Eight. And the way we'll start out is we'll take our current Engine Six that runs out of Station Six today and move it to Station Eight. And we'll open that house with an engine company, it'll be a paramedic engine company. Station Six will then house our new truck company, so that'll be our second ladder truck company in the city. And it'll be out there to cover that east build-out, and then we'll continue to run a medic out of there. So, you know, the way we look at it, to plan for the future is, as Mr. Ferris was talking about all the growth that's going on out there and the population growth, we also look at what the daytime population is gonna be. And with some of the development that's going in, we, we feel like the daytime population, and that's people living there, people working there, and people traversing through on one-twenty-one, is gonna be pretty high. So we feel like we're gonna have a lot of numbers to protect. So, as call volume dictates, after we open Station Eight, we will then look to add a medic in the future at Station Eight. So we'll be running an engine and a medic out of there. And then eventually, a, another engine back in Station Six, and a second battalion chief. And that's why we're expanding Station Six today, is to be able to house those multi-companies in the future as the growth continues and the call volume grows, and, and the needs for those services dictate, and we need those extra pieces of apparatus. If you look at the map, you'll see where Station Six currently sits, it's in the red circle, the red dot in the middle. And then the blue circle, the blue dot in the middle is where Station Eight is scheduled to go on the ground. And you'll see a slight overlap in those two radiuses, and that's, that's kinda how we decide kinda where to place stations for a good even coverage in our cities. That's a mile and a half radius around those stations, and you see a slight overlap. And that's to give us coverage if Station Eight is busy, and Station Six is covering that district, it's not gonna be, uh, a great, or a large response time to get into that district. And vice versa, you have some, you have some overlap coverages, so to speak. Now, you see some of our city and some of our ETJ areas aren't in those radiuses. And that's not to say that they don't have good coverage, because our infrastructure, as they go into place, gives us the ability to get to those areas within our, our response time averages that we wanna meet. It's just that we use that mile and a half radius just to kinda help us get a snapshot on the map and make sure that we are spacing our stations equally and strategically, I guess to say, so that we have good, uh, even coverages with some overlapping in our districts. But that's kinda our plan for the future.
The red dot or the blue dot, which one's the ladder truck?
The ladder truck will be sitting in the red dot, Station Six. And that way, it can get back to our, our western part of the city if it needs to, if our current truck is busy on something. Vice versa, that way, yes, sir.
Uh, what, down in the bottom of one D, one C, I guess, down in the bottom corner, southern end, where you're outside the circles, what's the response time gonna be for those?
And again, it, it, don't, don't look at that as saying, well, they don't have good coverage, so our response times aren't gonna be good. I'm gonna get, and I haven't driven that from Station Eight, but if you look, you come down to Josie, and then you have your eastern entrance into Castle Hills off of Josie. So our response times into that part of Castle Hills, or that part of our ETJ, I'm gonna guess it's gonna be around the four or five minute mark. And that's, where we wanna be is four minutes at, at, you know, on average.
Do you see any problems with having, if I'm understood correct, the, that's this, the east side of the city, by your saying seventeen eighteen, if it was, these will be on track and running?
We'll be, we'll be, uh, housing, yes, we're hoping to open Station Eight seventeen eighteen with the, with the new personnel here, Frank.
So at that time in this area, by seventeen eighteen, it's projected to have, if I remember correctly right now, this area's got about fifteen thousand, including Castle Hills. And so by seventeen eighteen, it's projected to have twenty, maybe, thousand? So twenty thousand, so you got one ladder truck servicing twenty thousand population, and you got one ladder truck servicing eighty thousand population?
Your ladder truck actually services four.
I understand, but I'm talking logistic-wise. You've got that ladder truck way on the east side of town, which serves around twenty thousand citizens.
We're gonna have a ladder truck and engine and a medic.
Right.
Carving that area.
Concerned, I guess, are you not concerned about not having another ladder truck for the east, from the east side going, service the other eighty thousand population? Because you're, you've got this ladder truck out here, I know it goes over there, but I'm talking response time to get to where I live, for that ladder truck, it's gonna be a long time.
Yes, sir.
So what I'm saying is, are you not concerned about this ladder truck out here is basically servicing an area that you've got, that's about a thirty, twenty thousand population? Then you've got one ladder truck that's over there servicing about eighty thousand population. Are you not concerned about there not needing another ladder truck to help that eighty thousand population?
Not at this time, because we're doing that today, and that's why we built Station Seven and put that ladder truck where it is, to center it in the city, so we have good response coverage for the city. And if you think about Louisville as it sits today, the majority of our structure, your ladder trucks really come into play for multi-story. And, and right now, three-story is our, is pretty much what we deal with, three-story apartments. If you look at what's projected to go in out east, as Mr. Ferris was talking, there's a lot of multi-story, and we're talking, correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, but I've been hearing five to ten stories on some of our buildings. So the need for a ladder truck out there becomes a lot greater because of the heights of the buildings that they're gonna be building out there, and the densities in those buildings as far as you're gonna have people living above, retail and stuff like that. So that's why it's important to us to have a truck out there in that area for a quicker response in that, in that coverage.
Hey, don't get me wrong, I wanted to question about why they had ladder trucks. I was questioning, do we need another ladder truck for the other area town, but you're saying that you don't think we do?
At this time, no, sir. I'm not gonna tell you, we never will.
Right.
But, uh, at this time, I don't think we will.
Okay, from the police side, the, uh, one of the big things that we can point to in our terms of our preparation for northeast Louisville, that Castle Hills is response time. Because the, even though northeast Louisville's fairly sparsely populated, I would consider Castle Hills fairly sparsely populated as well. But one thing we can point to is in our response times, you look at the overall, uh, average response times for parties, one through three, and that's the, in the overall city of Louisville, including everybody, it's seven minutes, nineteen seconds for party one, ten minutes, eleven seconds for party two, and a little over twenty-two minutes for party three. Now you factor out, you say, okay, what is it just in Castle Hills and the northeast Louisville? We're talking about a little over six minutes on average, longer to get there. And that's due largely to the gymnasium issues that we have, and trying to get people out there to, 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 to east. It goes up again, another nine minutes on average, uh, extra for party two. And then a lot of, that's right at fourteen minutes more for the party three. And then you say, what would we look like in Louisville, if we factor out all the northeast Louisville and Castle Hills, you see a dramatic drop in the average response times that we could expect to enjoy. Uh, just under seven minutes for party one, well over ten minutes for party two, and right at twenty-two minutes for party three. So it does make a big difference. Did you recall, when we started the crime control district, one of our big aims when we added those extra positions was to, to contact response times overall. So we do have to be prepared for the demand for services that we're gonna have out in northeast Louisville. And northeast Louisville right now, conservative, a bit more, because they're already in city limits of Louisville. But that's the expectation that they should have, that we can respond quickly. Now...
Can you go back that side a second?
Sure.
Will you say that
the one on the right, is that, is that, that's excluding northeast Louisville?
Yes, yes, sir, yeah, Castle Hills.
Did you calculate what it'd be with just excluding Castle Hills?
No.
You understand? So to me, we're gonna have to, though, to justify our, our cost to Castle Hills. We're gonna have to justify, say, we gotta service northeast Louisville, because they tend to listen. But, all the way we service Castle Hills is through contract. So to me, to them, to show them justification of our increase, we're gonna have to say, okay, well, in that service, you would be right, these people will set the same.
There's an allocation of costs, you're absolutely correct.
Yes, sir. Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So the real, the real challenge for us is, is being prepared for that. Typically, when I go to the manager's office, manage for staffing, usually it's after we have a significant workload, sort of behind the curve at that point, we're saying, workload is big, I need more people. They give it to me generously enough, and you guys do. But it takes them eighteen, twenty-four months to advertise, hire, select somebody, train them, and then they're helping run it out of training, and they will operate on their own in about, in about three years. So if we anticipate needing, uh, additional services out there, as soon as seventeen eighteen, and you give it to me next year, authorize me those positions next year, just so I can start that process of trying to get those additional positions on. Uh, you know, our, our big issue is like, most agencies in the area is complicated by high turnover, uh, and then there, and there's competition in the marketplace for, for good officers out there. Uh, we looked at the other day, and all the applicants that, that we advertise are coming out of the platform for us. We hired three percent of those. Of that three percent, we hire, about thirty-one percent of those guys don't make it through, through the process. So it's, it's a, it's a big challenge. Twenty-four team alone, we lost about ten people, most of those were two retirements. And that's another issue that we face here, because we're an older agency, we have people that are falling off the road, just doing that, that retirement. So that's, that's the challenge that we, that we go with. What we intend to do is, just to remind everybody, the city is divided into four patrol districts. Then with each patrol district, there are four beats. We leave it up to the Washington commander to baseball call load, time of day, day of week, time of year, whatever it is that they need to. They decide how to staff their beats, how many people we want each beat, do they exclude some beats because of call load? So we leave that to those guys to do that. Well, when we suggest building for northeast Louisville in particular, B two oh four is currently out there now. Can we get that, can we get that beat, the slot, uh, yes? B two oh four is, is all that in the, in the green, the, the green that you see there. That's, uh, mostly Castle Hills, it also includes the Austin Ranch area out there. Uh, it will, what we're proposing that we would do is have to reconfigure that B two oh four. And then we would add, those, the smaller boxes are individual reporting areas, we call them IRs. So eight hundred, uh, AL, AL two, uh, three, we would add those guys into B two oh four, because those are the existing areas in northeast Louisville that are already in city limits. It makes sense, uh, from a geographic standpoint, to, if we decide to staff that beat now, which we don't typically do now, we respond to calls for service in Castle Hills, and that's it. But if we're gonna staff that beat, then we would need to reconfigure it to add those IRs to it, and make it more, make, makes more sense to have people already out there that respond to calls for service.
And Chief Kerbo, wouldn't you say, even if we weren't gonna provide services to Castle Hills...
We still gotta deal with that northeast Louisville.
So we could even, you know, that would be a beat itself, so that we could reduce that response to...
Yeah, if you remember for, for years, at East Hill Park, we had to respond to, uh, the arena out there. Chief Taylor, I think you'll, you'll know that we have a lot of disturbances out there during the summer in particular. That geography has always been a challenge for us. So, you know, we, even if Castle Hills was out of the picture, we still gotta deal with some residents that are gonna be in northeast Louisville.
I thought you were telling me who you was giving to earlier.
Exactly. So our, our recommendation would be for, for Castle to consider adding a six officer patrol, authorizing that in fiscal fifteen, sixteen, uh, to have one position twenty-four hours a day, three or four hours a year. I need one point five people in order to do that, and come down to safety officers, and then I need a couple cars. So, we'd say that would be fifteen, sixteen. After we see, uh, get those guys on, we see what the workload demands are, then we bring on maybe a second position later on down the road. Well, yeah, that would be, we want the workload to kinda dictate that for us. We've talked about it a lot, but we make sure we have footnotes so we don't forget it. We are gonna renegotiate our portion of the contract with Castle Hills. Uh, that, that methodology is, as Tony says, and I think quite correctly, we thought we weren't gonna have a lot of kind of demand for services out there, and we were probably wrong on that respect from the police side. So we'll, we need to go with that, a few more, more action costs there.
And you'll remember, the other issue that we're working on right now is the attempt to change the state laws so that we can collect the police crime control tax, sales tax, in Castle Hills. So that sales tax number goes up, if they have more available funding.
We're further recommending in seventeen eighteen, add additional officer to the traffic unit plus a vehicle. With those residential population, the numbers that we've seen, we're estimating, real conservatively, based upon some great numbers that Dana South gave me used to, you know, as a testament, a little over thirty-eight million demo trips annually out there by just the folks that are gonna be residents. Now, don't count any, uh, visitors or tourism that might be drawn that way. Now don't count any, uh, visitors or tourism that might be drawn that way or whatnot that come through Louisville. So, I think we're gonna need another traffic officer for that, there'll be increased accidents, some requests for, uh, traffic enforcement out there that we're probably not experiencing now.
Plus you'll have corporate eventually, it'll probably be another additional member.
Absolutely. And then in eighteen nineteen, three additional detectives for criminal investigations. By being, we think that will generate enough offices that will need additional investigative services out there. Uh, that will lower, lower the case level for existing detectives now and provide them a car also to operate with. So I think we go to the next side, you kind of see, kind of how we had it paced out, and you'll know that, you know, one thing we could do, we currently have a three officer overfill that, that council has given us. You could, if you needed to, say, okay, we wanna give you the six positions, but we'll fund three of them because three of them is the overfill that, that you've already allowed to do. And when, if we should ever get to that point where we're completely full, and we have to staff those three, then you can figure out how to, how to bait sell, you know, come up with money for that.
I had to tell you though, right now we're down twelve officers.
Actually down eleven.
Oh, yeah, got that, good, good, down eleven officers, so do we have to do that overfill is a huge challenge too.
Anyway, so that's what the numbers look like, uh, the, the fifteen, sixteen, the, the six officers, that top number, the marked vehicles, that's two marked vehicles for a hundred and thirty-one thousand, it's a little over just one hundred, seven hundred thousand point. The, uh, traffic officer, his vehicle in sixteen seventeen, and then with three detectives and their unmarked vehicle, you can see unmarked vehicles cost a whole lot less than marked cars do. So we talked a little bit about it, you know, beginning with that home invasion robbery last year in, in Castle Hills. By the way, that occurred in a gated section of one of the districts out there. You, you know, and I think people think by and large that those are pretty safe, and I would say they are, but it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean the crime can't happen anywhere, if that's the case here. But it really shook the foundation of, of people's beliefs and perceptions of safety out there, uh, you know, brought them into my world, unfortunately, and so, uh, we had kind of, kind of had to, uh, deal with that a little bit. Now you wanna see a little bit more of a police presence out there. Well, under the current contract, that would be considered expanded services in some way or another. We define that as being those additional services that we use for burglary or all of that prevention, uh, traffic enforcement, uh, covert surveillance. Any kind of the extra investigation that we do for, an expanded crime scene for a major event like a kidnapping or murder, or in this case, a home invasion robbery. We did build in some separate money for that because we, it took a lot of manpower to deal with that. So, we're gonna be, we've got together a plan that went into effect in January to provide us some extra, uh, covert surveillance to help deal with some burglary and theft issues out there. With new construction always comes, uh, appliance theft, copper theft, supplies that always come up this out there, so we're doing that. Uh, we're also adding some additional traffic enforcement, and we're doing all this based upon overtime. Now, my concerns are that we're gonna, that we're gonna water down a little bit too much of our premier neighborhood services from what we're doing. Because officers can only work so much. This really, it, it's designed to be kind of a vanity, very short-term solution to a problem that they perceive. Well, honestly, I think it's, uh, it's one of those things that could easily go away, but I can tell you that I'm not gonna maintain it forever. With us being short of eleven folks, it's just hard to get people to wanna sign up for overtime when they're already off. They already have department mandates that you're gonna work sixteen hours in a day, they, they work twelve hours a day, so do the math, then about four hours, you're done, you know, as far as we're concerned. So, it, it's really gonna be a very short time. And it doesn't necessarily work, uh, deal with our response time issue out there. Those guys are specifically assigned, uh, certain things to do, places to watch, and they don't really answer those true calls for service. Yes, sir.
I have several questions. So, I'm assuming, cause you're smart man, I, I mean it seriously. Um, in, in calculating all your statistics, as you add in particular multifamily, does multifamily tend to bring more domestic violence or assault or any category that you don't see as commonly in single family?
It, it does, we, we turn with conflict, sometimes that results in a family violence issue, but yeah, typically conflict does bring us into bear more often than not.
But is that factored in?
Yes, yes.
Okay. The other question I have is that, is there, uh, can I, you know, hate to drive the call so further up, but then you wanna provide its service. Is there any thought to having any sort of substation or storefront operation in this area to have a more tangible presence to, to maybe, if nothing else, make the people who live in that area feel that they're not being remotely serviced?
You know, we discussed that to agree, quite frankly storefront, it's kind of adequate in technology. And the first time that you don't have somebody there, when they deal, you know, you're, you're done with that. Now what you two and I have discussed is that Station Eight will be kind of a waystation for us. They've agreed to, to say, hey, if you'll, you know, if you want an office out here for your guys to bring witnesses in or, you know, come sit down and make a report with the victim where they don't, where they're, where they're located. You've got room out here to do that, and so we'll take it after that. But as far as really trying to have a storefront, you know, that's marked so that somebody could expect to, to find an officer there twenty-four seven, I just think that sets us up for disaster, failure.
And, and a substation, I realize, is very expensive.
And it's very expensive to do that. You know, a lot of people are doing storefronts, obviously in retail spaces, and, and I'll tell you, the, the ones I, that I try to visit, when there's nobody there, I think, what's the point? You know?
Okay.
I've never seen anyone in time with villagers.
I, I.
When she took, you never had lunch with, too, with?
Anytime.
Those guys do a good job.
He already knows that.
We are.
No, we, we've discussed availability of both of our stations out there.
Well, are you through, is that kind of it?
That's, that's it for me.
Is that it?
My, my thought is this, I think you're doing a great job what you're doing now, your planning is a great job. Going forward, uh, to me, I'll look at from both sides, from citizen to Louisville, we need to make sure that we're charging other entities enough to provide whatever surges it is so that their citizens are not subsidizing another entity's lifestyle, whatever it might be. But to do that, if I'm in that other entity, I'm gonna wanna see a justification for my actual increase in cost. So to me, we know we're gonna have to service east northeast Louisville. We would need to break out and make sure, and we can show them the same charge you had, the time, the response times on everything, but you have to have, including northeast Louisville. And then show them what the current is time now for Castle Hills, and say, if you want to stay at that, here's your price. If you wanna go to what the rest of city of Louisville is, you pay this price. It'd be much easier.
Exactly.
To me, you're representing both sides, like, well, you're representing the citizen of Louisville, make sure they're not, uh, subsidizing another entity. And then the other entity, make sure that they're getting a fair value for a thirty dollar. And then, if they choose not to, to me, I would be willing to say, okay, fine.
This is the service you get.
Well, as Rudy says, maybe we lose some money, but I'd be thankful, I think within the next three years, you'll use that money up, and we won't be using money, but you'll be able to provide better services than you were just turning about. Your old, your officers aren't gonna be having to work this all the time, they're not gonna be drained, they're not gonna be, and you may be able to better staff yourself because they're not effective workers to be honest.
True.
It puts, pulls us at a hard time.
Yeah, I would think that one big disconnect is the residents out there don't realize that we are a response call service, not a patrol service.
Maybe it's a hell of a head, they, in, in their minds, most of the residents out there, they think their city of Louisville, and their accusation is that we're gonna get what, you know, anybody else in the city of Louisville should expect. And that's really kind of unfair, you know?
Chief Kerbo actually gone out twice now, uh, this last year to meet with the residents and explain that, but there is a huge disconnect, they do not understand. And unfortunately, we've been giving up such a good deal for so long, when you truly see the cost of that service, it's gonna be difficult. We were, we were planning with preliminary numbers, we had to go from about a hundred and fifty to well over seven thousand.
To that point, this will be a significant increase. Does council have any objection to resident staff to make sure that they do a budget for Castle Hills that prevents citizens from Louisville from subsidizing entities outside of the city?
I'm getting a little bit.
Does that make sense, is that what I just said? Fairly kind of gives you a direction to, hey, we want to help you, we wanna provide you the services, but we can't lose money, we can't charge our citizens for your lifestyle.
That's a little money.
Thank you, what you mean, and I, I certainly agree with what the request that you're asking for, what you're both needing. And I, I certainly didn't, what you think, I didn't think you needed the ladder, I do, because of a lot more, my concern was union and other ladders.
Just, just one more point, Mayor, uh, here's a list of other city services, we have actually had the district come to us this past year and say, we wanna know if you can provide all of these additional services.
For a price?
Yeah, well, yes and no, some of the services really are gonna have a legal review because we don't have the authority to provide services in a water district. Code enforcement, nuisance indictment is one, we don't have the authority to do that. Uh, you know, even on issues like traffic enforcement, Liz, do you wanna explain how we got around, uh, created the ability to actually even enforce, uh, thank you, Chief. School zone regulations and such?
Well, the, the way it came up was some of our officers were having to go to J P court and it was causing some confusion if they wrote tickets out to Castle Hills. So there's a provision in the local government code that says that, um, a city can enforce the rules on its roads if it owns roads outside of its municipal borders. And when Castle Hills was created, there were kids created that paid for the infrastructure, including the streets, and the streets are actually towers in Castle Hills, so there are streets outside of our city limits. And so, um, as part of this ordinance, what we did is we ratified the, the traffic regulations that Castle Hills had imposed on those streets in our ordinance, just adopted and ratified them. And now because there are streets, we can prosecute those in any court instead of having to go to J P court. We also put in a provision that provides how, if they wanna change some of the rules or out of stop sign or whatever, they have to come to us and we actually do it because there are roads.
What about riding on the off cars?
Allowable under state law because it's a community's work, or community.
I don't know if that makes sense, but.
A lot of state law doesn't make any sense, it's gonna get worse.
Is it, is it because it's a golf course community or because it's, uh, probably something else?
It's a golf course community.
So the match plan is maybe, there are some limitations on speed there.
We can say, like, our golf course community for one, and I don't, I don't think that, I think.
I've looked it up before, and I have to look it up again, I can't remember.
I think it could just be, okay, because it's a golf course here.
No, there's a definition, when we've done the research, they make the definition, they don't have a rule.
So did you, did I actually say that we own the streets, but they're not city limits? I thought when we did that, I thought when we did that, they, they became part of the city, no?
Two different issues there, so, because we issued the bonds, uh, the paper pays for all the infrastructure, we own all the structure in Castle Hills. If you look at our books, our assets, it shows Castle Hills. Now, uh, as far as the city limits, uh, we actually made some changes to make sure that the, highways, I think Richard talked about, like one twenty-one. The same roadways were in our city limits so we could have enforcement power.
We did some annexation on five forty-four, twenty-one, or whatever, and I think in the interior streets, I remember we did that to divide up, basically, we basically did that to divide up. Are they treated the same way as the E T J?
The street, I mean, please, what treated the same way?
Yes, the E T J, my understanding is nobody can come in and take that E T J away from us entirely, like, nobody can be in there.
There are roads, there are roads, yeah, they can.
And nobody can come in and take that from us even though it might be a person in the silver.
No, that's the partial strip.
Okay.
It's a lot of complexity here.
There are roads, but we can't enforce, we can't enforce our laws on our roads.
Another city from coming in.
Because they're in that E T J.
Well, we connect with dogs where we can.
Have a question. So we're recovering some part of policing fires through the contract, what about court costs?
No.
But it generated court costs, right?
Unless you look at the analysis, you have to look at the analysis of the tickets that are coming in, and you have to do a calculation on the, the technical personnel, and if you've not done that math, I mean, I guess it doesn't.
But if someone in Louisville is paying some part of court costs in addition to what they could find they might get, one from the outside is paying the same thing.
Well, would you move over your West of Rudy?
No, a follow-up to his, that court costs, I assume you're talking about just, you're not talking about the fee for the court cost, you're just talking about the administration of all the.
Administrative judge, et cetera.
Yeah, well, if, in that case, we wouldn't have someone from outside the city not paying court costs either. If someone from Castle Hills or someone from Dallas.
Regardless, begins with you.
If court were in the case, wouldn't, would the cost applied up, anybody that appeared there for?
That was my first question.
Sure, so the, the people from out of town, they actually did a violation in Louisville, that's how we wrote the ticket.
Right.
He's talking about now we're enforcing traffic laws outside of our city boundaries, and so our courts get impacted with those tickets.
Right, but if, I don't, I don't guys all set up, they're not getting a break because they're in Castle Hills as opposed to Dallas. They still pay the fee, that, that's my fault, that was the whole deal, but they're not getting a break for anything.
They're not getting a break.
No, I'm just saying.
But they're not paying for the cost of that, I think is what he's saying.
Yeah, I was just saying that because we control those streets, because we've taken on that, um, that responsibility, we've also taken on additional administrative costs and court system. It's created.
That's correct.
Those additional cases are voluntary, administration of the court.
But, but no different than if you're enforcing and the people are all from outside of the city limits.
As long as, as long as the streets weren't in Castle Hills maybe, but now we've taken on all these streets in Castle Hills.
We take on thirty-five, and what's the difference?
Because thirty-five.
I know thirty-five's in the city limits.
It's in the city limits.
But the people that are being ticketed aren't in the city.
Yeah, but the court is committed in the city limits, so it's already our work.
The fence is committed inside the city limits, while the other, the fence is committed outside.
But if we need to add that cost to it, do we add that cost to it?
No.
Cause that's what we, if, if that's one of the things that we look at.
Right.
That's what we need to look at on the cost of Castle Hills.
I think that deals with, you look at that, do a little bit of cost.
Yeah, cause if we're talking kind of two different sides of a coin, um, it's not who, who causes the offense, it's the area that we, the additional area that we've taken on to enforce.
I don't understand why we wouldn't cover that expense.
But we could, I think that's what he's saying.
That's my point.
That's his point, yeah, I think that's what he's saying.
Okay.
Exactly. In interest of time coming up, so, but, on all these issues here, does anybody, does the council have a problem first? If legal says, can't do that, we don't do it, we just, we don't do it. Second, if it's something else either that legal says you can do, before we agree to it, we determine a cost factor. And we, we recruit that cost factor so we have to do that we're dividing that service to.
That's as close as possible to a full recovery.
How would we do that with the county? How do we come up to the county and we agree to do stuff on county roads?
We actually use their methodology on the county.
I mean, how, is it fit? Do we get the benefit or does the county get the benefit?
As far as covering the cost?
Yeah.
So, there are two areas of state current police where we have county services. Normally, the responses are fairly minimal, I mean, the workload's very different, so, we'd have to go back and look, Rudy, but I would guess that probably.
It'd be a good place to, to start anyway.
We could look at that methodology, but I'm gonna guess it doesn't cover costs there either, other than it's more minimal, the, the service.
Well, you don't pay, it's what happens then.
No, that.
But we know that.
Okay, so, but are these services up here, is everybody okay with that, that if legal says no, we just say no?
Yep.
And they say you can, we give staff direction to look at it, determine a cost factor for that, and we would make sure that we recuperate that call or charge for that cost factor so that to that entity, make sure it's not an additional burden on our taxes.
And I would say whenever we figure our cost is gonna be at a certain percentage for any contingencies or, or any other overages that we're currently being burdened by.
for any contingencies or any other overages that were currently being burdened by current reform.
Administration or whatever.
Yeah, it needs to be administration. When I, when I see this slide, when I see this slide, all I see is, I want you to do everything-
We're not going to do it anyway.
Not be our city.
That's true.
Pretty much, yeah.
I mean, that, that's what this says. This says, well, we want you to run everything, but we don't want to be in Louisville.
We, we want to add the annex then, it's just you want to do it, yeah.
That's really the issue.
That's really the issue.
And I really do want to be in Louisville.
But we got to decide what we're looking about, so. Is everybody okay with that issue? And as Greg said, maybe put a small copy on there where it would absorb any unforeseen future cost? Plus, like Rudy said, since these are, I guess, done on an annual basis, your, 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 your capital cost will increase as well.
We did.
Any of these facility things that they're talking about? I want property. I'm not building a library on their property. I'm not building a facility on their property. I want Louisville property.
We'll build in the middle of one of our streets. Close it down, paint it.
Put some paint, just paint it, all you do is just paint it, and put some chairs in, and you-
Okay, everybody get back.
And that goes to my example when we were talking about some time ago, about the library and the services that we provide to the adjoining jurisdiction's membership and all the benefits that go along with the library, and the fee that we charge them when other municipalities were dropping out of that shared position that we put in. So that, that is a follow-up to that particular argument made some time ago. Were we getting amply compensated for this additional-
Service.
Uh, service, yes.
Now, and remember, you also allow the Castle Hill residents to use all of your recreation centers at the same price that we charge our citizens. It's another thing that we've done historically.
And why would you?
We've done it for a long time, I've seen your red truck.
Should we do it for our mountain or accountability?
We do under the library because that's the county service, interlocal. But for recreation, but we have the historical, historical Castle Hill.
Same way to track.
Usage, I could in the library, I could if they actually got a membership at the rec center. I could count, I could count.
Yeah, I agree. We need to look at that and see if it's issued, then you need to, it's not issued, I mean, it's not worth the time, and it's issued. So if you get, did you drink what we need on the side? Okay, we're going to take a ten minute break, everybody, folks, go ahead.
There are, there are more snacks out there for your break right now.
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of them.